I had yesterday, uh, two days ago. Terrible. Okay. So. Let me copy this. This person know I'm gonna work on it. Okay. And. Here's that. Comment this. Okay. So, let's see, they have. E to the X. And it looks like that's probably all over X. Sorry for the rapid window switching. So, E. The X. Over X. And this is um, this is equal to Y. So. We want the stationary points, that's the point where the derivative is equal to zero, so we need to take the derivative, so if if Y is equal to this. This implies, we're gonna use the um. The quotient rule. So we're gonna get U prime V minus U. The prime over B squared. Okay. That's the derivative of U over V. I guess probably with respect to X. Okay, so. We're gonna get. U prime. Okay, the derivative, oh, and maybe I should just, you know, I might. I'm I'm gonna do this. Try not to be glib, I'm gonna set U equal to uh, E to the X. Which implies that U prime is equal to. E to the X. And then V is equal to X. Which implies that V prime is equal to one. So, we're gonna get U prime V. Minus uh, U. V prime, which is one. Over V squared, okay, so this is um. This is our derivative here. So, we need to figure out. Where this is equal to zero, this is our Y prime. So let me just. Not. Be so. Put piece of with notation here. We want this to be equal to Y prime. There we go. That's just like an aside for us, so this is kind of how I should write it. Um, so we wanna find out whether the stationary points are, so that gives us. Y prime equal to zero, which implies that. E to the X times X. Minus E to the X over X squared equals zero. And, this is gonna happen when our numerator is equal to zero. So we can just set that equal to zero. Uh, and I'll write this X E to the X, just using the commutative property there. It looks nicer, okay, so here we go, we've got X E to the X minus E to the X equals zero. Uh, we can see that in each of these terms, we have a factor of E to the X, so I will factor that out. So I get E to the X times the quantity of X minus one. And you can just uh, distribute this back and check to see that it's true. Um, so then. Either this has to equal to z- equal zero, or this equals zero, uh, one of these factors must be equal to zero. Um, and we know from the graph of. E to the X that it actually. Never equals zero, so it can't be that term. So we, we're only gonna get one um. One zero here, we're just gonna get X equals one. So at X equals one, the derivative equals zero, so let's go back and check that. Um. So if we go back to this equation here, and we plug in one here, and one here, and one here, one here. What we get is we get. E. To the one. Times one minus E to the one. Over one. Which is equal to zero. E to the one minus E to the one is equal to zero. So that is a root, and I think that's the only one. Um. So what that means is, we know this is the X value where the uh, critical point happens, so we should go back up here. And we should look and see what the Y value is, so. Uh, we'll get. The point one, then we plug this in, it's E to the one, which is E divided by one. Which is just E, so this is the, the point. And, let's see, can we? I guess we could do like a second derivative to make sure this is, let's just graph it. Let's just graph it. Or, let me see, how difficult is this second derivative? Guess we can do that, let's do the second derivative. So, well, no, they really don't. They don't ask us to. Classify the point, do they? Oh, cool, alright, you're welcome. Uh, thank you for watching the video, thank you for commenting in the chat and everything, it helps get noticed. Um, let me see. Yeah, and so let's just, I'll graph this, and we can. Um, just check it. To make sure I'm not wrong. So we'll do E to the X. Divided by X. Yeah, okay, so that's great, there's only one critical point, and it happens right here. One, two point seven one eight, two point seven one eight is approximately E, so that came out nicely. Uh, any other questions on this one? Oh no, did I close the, there we go. Um. And if you do have any other questions, please post them. So we can find some more good things to work on, I'm, I'm just gonna like, go through the. Homework help subreddit otherwise, unless you do have another question. And see if there are others that I can help with. If not, I'll probably just do a short video and. Do some my own studies, I still have another chapter to get through in this book. Done this week. I have no idea what this means. Unbalanced assignment. I added row D to balance it all out, after that I was only able to conceal, cancel only one column. I have no idea what I'm looking at here. Okay, you're very welcome, thank you for, thank you for posting a good question. You have any other questions, you can just send me a message or post them to my subreddit as well, like crosspost them, and. Uh, if I'm online, I'll, I'll come help you. Yeah, I really don't know what, what this is, I've never heard of this before. Unbalanced assignment. Okay. This looks like geometry. Getting a lot of mileage out of the geometry questions lately, which is good. Alright, N U O P J means segment. Okay, it's cut or area. So it gives you AC. Gives you A O. Okay. Asks you to find OC. So these look like all areas, so triangle AOB. Segment ABD. ABD, okay. So that's um, just a part of the circle. No. AOB is a triangle. Oh, AOB, this much must be like a. Part of the circle. Wait, hold on. I guess slice the circle. And then ABD. Okay, actually don't know how to do that. What can you do with calculus? This looks like a geometry class. Oh, it's the length of the segment, but why is it meter squared? It's a millimeter squared. AOB. Yeah, I don't know. Functions word problems. The entire news coverage right now is just one exponential word problem. Okay, the area covered by owl algae bloom, maybe, owl bloom. Doubles every week, if the area presently covered is four meters squared, how long will it take? For the owl bloom to cover a lake of area five hundred meters squared? Okay. So. The doubling time is a week, so we need to use that to figure out the rain and the rate. Alright, let's try this. I'm gonna post this one after I actually do it, just in case. I. Don't do it well. Okay. So the doubling time is one week. Assume A is the area of al- algae, assume T is time in weeks. Okay. So I guess it would be continuous growth since it's bacteria. Doubles every week. Can you just use that directly? Oh. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So that's good. So. This person used two to the T, which kind of like threw me off, and. I questioned. Whether or not that was a good way to go. But, I like what they said there, cause the, the actual division, cell divisions aren't going to be synchronous. After maybe like the first few, uh, because. You know, life isn't perfect in that way, some, some bacterium or algae in this case. Um, or bacteria, some algae in this case will get. More access to nutrients, or sunlight, or whatever, and may. Split at different rates, or maybe they just, you know. Aren't both daughters of the same cell. And uh. So it's a little more continuous than this. Um. Okay, so, we wanna figure out what the rate is, so we're told that it's going to double. Every week. So we need to figure out, okay, so T is time in weeks. And let's say R is going to be growth rate. So we know that. Uh, if you start off with some number of. Bacteria, let's say you start off with P bacteria, and it follows this exponential growth. After one week, we're gonna have that doubled. Okay, so, uh, basically. We're gonna get two P. After. One week, so I can just, I'll leave that like this, okay? Um, and we can divide both sides of this by P. And we get two. Equals E to the R. And so here we can solve for R, it's just a constant, it's like two point seven. Uh, something. So we can actually, there's only one unknown here, we can take the natural log of both sides of this. And we get R, actually, let me just. Uh, so we'll take a log of two equal to the log of E to the R. And then so, there's that exponent rule that brings this down out front. And, log of two is equal to R, the natural log of E, like the base of. The natural log is the base E, so this is uh. We're composing an inverse function with its function, so this just becomes a one. So R equals the log of two. Um, now that we have that information. We can go back, and we can use the same formula, so we're gonna say, whatever the current population is, call it A. Is equal to P, which is the initial population, times E to the RT, now we know R, and we're given P. So, the only unknown is time. Um, now we wanna find the. They measure this in meters squared, so they measure an area, we don't know the time that it's gonna take for five hundred meters squared, so that's our A. Actually, let's go ahead and just, we'll solve it here, and then with the symbols, and then I'll sub in after that. So, um, we're looking for T. So we're gonna divide both sides by P. We get A over P, this is the final population, the initial population. Equals E to the RT. And we're gonna take the natural log of both sides. So we get the log of A over P. Equals. The, so the natural log is gonna cancel with this, with this E, and we'll use the exponent rule to bring this down, so it becomes. RT. Um, and now we have that quotient rule with, with this, so this is the log of A minus the log of P. Equals um. R times T, I'll divide both sides by R. And that gives us T. Okay, so now from this formula, let me copy this down, T is equal to. The log of A minus the log of P all over R, we know all of these values. Um, we solved for R just now, that was the log of two. Uh, so this is going to be equal to the log of A. We are looking for five hundred. Minus the log of the initial population, which is four. And, then we got R is the log of two. Um, so this is calculator work. And so, it's going to be. This is the time in weeks, so it's gonna be six point, uh, I'll say nine, seven, I'm just rounding. And I think that's your answer there. So, let me. Actually, go back and post that I did this. So, it's like this weird gamble of, you know, am I, uh. That's funny, they, see, they already answered the question, I shouldn't have even posted this, but that's cool. Um. Like, am I gonna be able to finish this problem before someone else gets it, so then I think maybe I'll, I'll post the live stream. Uh, before I even start, but then what happens if I model the thing incorrectly and. Waste twenty minutes of someone's time doing their problem wrong, which happens, like it can happen. Alright, so there's three comments here, so maybe nothing going on with this one. Let's go. Hey guys, I have the answer to this problem, but no idea how to get there, could really use some help. Uh. Instructions are, use the formulas for lowering powers to write the expression in terms of the first power of cosine. Terms of the first power of cosine. What do they mean by lowering powers? I've seen this on people's like study guides before, and. I think they're, what they mean is like making a substitution and then, well, this person actually did. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Some sweet definite integrals. Alright. I drew the graphs and integrated the first function, but can't seem to grasp how I can find the area bound by the Y axis and Y equals what? Oh. Okay, that's a good question, um, by the Y axis and Y equals one. So. And what do you guys think, should I, should I post the actual minute where? I start the problem, or should I just let people scrub through it, I think I would get more watch time if I let people scrub through it, but. It seems a little rude. Okay. I've been working on calculus lately, so hopefully I can just do this really easily. Alright, so, we want the definite integral from zero to one. Of X squared DX. And what is the area bounded by this curve and the Y axis and the line Y equals one? So. Okay. So, the, the first thing is, I think we need to evaluate this integral. And, and then it looks like the second thing is, they want the area bounded by this curve, so if we do. So Y equals X squared, so here's Y equals X squared. And then. When Y equals one, X will equal one. Let's call this Y equals one. Here's our line Y equals one, we want the curve. Bounded by the Y axis, the line Y equals one, and this curve, okay? So that is, and this is from zero to one. So that's this area. Oh, I see. Have I made a mistake? The area bounded by this curve, the Y axis, here's the Y axis, that's Y. The Y axis and the line Y equals one, so we wanna find this area. Alright. So the first thing is, we're gonna find. The red area here. Okay. This is, this is the area given by the definite integral. And then the second thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna find this area. By subtracting the red area from the total um. Area in this rectangle. Okay, so, here's a rectangle, the total area in that rectangle is the blue plus the red. So I'll find the area of the rectangle, and I'll subtract the area. And that'll leave us just the blue. This is the area and the red here. Alright, so. Alright, um, first let's find this guy, the integral of X squared, so the antiderivative is, we're gonna add one. So it'll be X to the two plus one. Divided by. Two plus one, right, that's our antiderivative for uh. Polynomials. Uh, or for power functions, and this is gonna be evaluated from zero to one. Um, so that will be X cubed divided by three. Evaluated from zero to one. Which is. One third, I'll factor out the one third, this is. Oh, sorry, X cubed, this is. One cubed minus zero cubed. Which equals one third. So this red area here. Is one third. Okay. Now that we have that information. Just check and see if anybody's watching. Okay, yeah. Yep, thank you for that feedback. I, I, I was like. I didn't have that idea when I first started doing this, and I did a couple of live streams, and then. Didn't tell people where to start watching, and so they knew I was working on their problem, and. They would like go to the stream to find it. Uh, and that I was getting huge amounts of watch time, and a lot of concurrent viewers, and so it looked like my. My numbers were good, but maybe that's, you know. Not as. Good as having satisfied viewers, so, I think you're right, I think I should probably just tell them the time. Um, okay, so we found the red area, it's one third, and then we can find the area of this, this box, so let's think about that integral again. Um, this is X equals zero, and X equals one. So that's zero and one, okay, so this distance here, from, from zero to one is one, it's the length of that side is one. And the length of that side is one. And then, the top line here is bound by Y equals one, so we have a one by one square. Our square is one by, uh, uh, or, yeah, I guess it's a square, I was gonna say rectangle, but. Yeah, no, but I mean, it's not my stream, right, like this isn't about me, this is about. Uh, I'm trying to make math, like, exciting and approachable. And, you know, if I have to. Go out there and. Teach people how to do trig or whatever, uh, in order to get people to do math with, then that's what I'm gonna do, so this is our stream. And, you know. And, you know, if it makes money, I'm gonna make the money hopefully, but. Yeah, this is for us. So if you enjoy it and you're getting something out of it, then that will make me happy. Since I only have thirty subscribers right now, I'm just doing this out of sheer enjoyment. Okay, so if we take the area of a square. Well, it's an area of a square is equal to length times width, right? And so here our length is one and our width is one. So our area of that square is one. So we are gonna find the area of the blue. So the area, I'm gonna call it the area of the blue. Is equal to the area of the square minus the definite integral, right? That we just figured out. So this we know is one third and this we know is one. So we get one minus one third. And so we'll make a common denominator here. This is three thirds minus one third. And if you're confused about that, please let me know. Adding and subtracting fractions, everybody needs a refresher on that. Okay, so here are answers, two thirds. Uh, this area bound. By Y equals one, the Y axis and our curve is two thirds. So hopefully that helps. Okay, let's see if we can find another one. I wanna do something more like long format. I'm hoping like to get, uh. You know, a student who is about to start a course, like going to university maybe and is gonna have a pre-calculus or calculus course, something like that. And. Wants to work the entire course through. Um, so I would just use the same book or, or maybe we would use the same book. And we, we do homework together, uh, on the live stream and they could send a link to their classmates. Uh, I wanna do something like that. It's more a long format thing to get a lot of people engaged. Okay, I don't wanna do any combinatorics since I am no good at combinatorics. Calc two, uh, I don't know if I can do any calc two. I don't, I haven't really tutored calc two. I need to brush up. So let's see if I can do this. I need help trying to understand how to solve this integral using arc length form for a parametric equations. Curve, yeah, I'll do that. Okay, consider the differential equation. Find the particular solution, Y equals F of X to the given differential equation. With initial condition F of one equals negative one. Okay. So I'm terrible at Diffie Q. Let's see if this is separable. I think it's separable, so. If it's separable, we should be able to do it relatively easily. Come on, my computer's freezing. I did do, uh, something different this time that I've never done before. I actually recorded this as well as streaming it, cuz. Uh, there's a YouTuber that I watch and. Um, I'm not gonna shout him out, even though he's great, just because this channel is very different from his channel and I really wanna keep it. Focused on math. Um, but I noticed that they, they live stream and then. Also record and chop up the, the better parts of their like rants and tirades and post those as separate videos. Um, and I thought that was really cool. So I'm doing that today and maybe I'll post this problem as a separate video. Alright, so this is a separable one, I think. Um, so we can write this as D Y DX. Equal to negative two X over Y. And what we can do is we can take these as differentials. Okay, and we'll cross multiply essentially, like, uh, there, you can't do this with every type of differential equation. Um, but we can do it here. So we'll get Y DY equals negative two X DX. And with this, we can just integrate both sides. So here the interval is gonna be Y plus some constant, but we won't write it here. We'll bring it all over to the other side. And then this is going to be negative X squared. Plus C. Okay, so here we have, you know, uh, some function. Which is the antiderivative of, this is the integral of this function basically. And so this is an IVP, an initial value problem. And so here is our initial condition. Um, so this is F of X. Okay, and so we have an X value in here and we have an X value in here. So when X equals one. We know that F of X equals negative one. So let's plug in one for this. Uh, we have negative. One squared plus some constant equal to negative one. And so we can just simplify. This is negative one. Plus C. Equals to negative one. And then solving for C, we get C equals zero, which is cool. So now we can come back and edit our original thing and say that F of X equals negative X squared. Um, so let's, let me just walk through this. Uh, did I actually post it to tell this person I was solving it? I didn't. How long do you think it was when I started this? Thirty-six. Frustrating. I'm forgetful sometimes. I didn't even look to see if this, um, had been solved, which is probably a waste of time. Okay, uh, so this is the answer if you're just joining us. That's the answer here. Actually, that doesn't look right. Is it true? So let's check actually. So the derivative. Of F of X here is negative two X. And. We want. To know. This is two X and I'm figuring that Y is X squared. I think it's right. Okay, it's the particular solution. So we just need one solution. We don't need the family of solutions. I think this is good. Let me look and see what the other people said. Yes. Yeah, so they gave the same answer. Yeah, okay, so these people got the same answers as me, which is cool. Cuz I am terrible at differential equations. What do you mean by lock? Demonstrate this expression where P is a function that depends on X and Y. So this is. The partial of P with respect to X. From X one to X two. But I don't even know what demonstrate this expression means. I did not know that they did that. That's really interesting. It, I should know more about this subreddit cuz I take basically all of my questions from there. Sometimes I go to the cheat at math subreddit if this one's. Um, like tapped out cuz they answered them so quickly in this subreddit. Uh, this is one of the better communities that I've come across. But usually I've never seen them lock anything of mine, uh. I don't think the moderator is actually, oh, so I, I guess it would probably be the. The poster that locks it. Okay. This is follows prove that. Zero. Uh, I don't remember the definition of this. I'm not doing that. Whoa, I love this. This person's on the computer and just didn't take a screenshot. A poll of eighty-one students found that forty-three percent were in favor of raising tuition, building new math buildings. The standard deviation of this poll was seven percent. This is statistics, which I don't like. Okay. I think I'm gonna pack it in. Everything gets answered so quickly. Oh, okay, I need to look at the like, the rules of this subreddit. Yeah. That's interesting. I, I don't know. I feel like really weird about locking a thread myself because. I've, I've posted answers and it was actually wrong before. His screen showing his. Yeah, that's funny. Um, okay, so can you solve for K? One sixth, K squared. I mean, we should be able to, oh, maybe not. Rational function. Okay, yeah, this is answered. How to solve for the grazing area of an animal with a barn? In the way. I need help with question two E. Two E, so consider a curve B. So this is. Pi over two to pi. So. This one shouldn't be on the unit circle. Alright y'all, any other questions? Oh, okay, yeah, I'll go back and look at it actually. Um, I don't know, there's three people watching. I don't know if everyone is like up to this moment where we are now. I think I'm gonna go do some of my own studying. Unless anyone has any other questions. Um, thank you all for watching. Please subscribe and do all of those things like comment. Share with your classmates if, if you're in the same class, uh, as someone else who is doing the same problem, let them know. Help them out a little bit. Uh, otherwise I'll see y'all later.